We'll now call the city council regular meeting to order for November the fourteenth, six P M. Please rise the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation been given by my dad, Pat Anderson.
Father, we don't want to thank you this day. Truly is a day, Lord, that you've made. And father, we just ask for the fear of you in this place, Lord, that we can make decisions based, Lord, on your wisdom, Lord, and on your righteousness. We thank you, Lord, for the mind of Christ, what you've given to us, Lord, for those sound decisions, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Or we call the roll. We have a couple swearing ins. Madam Clerk, if you'll.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I'll start with, were you just gonna do it all at once?
You just did all at once.
Okay.
You wanna stand?
You're cool. All right, um, both of you repeat after me. I do solemnly swear. That I will support, honor, protect, and defend the Constitution. And government of the United States and of the state of Florida. That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state. And under the charter of the city of Avon Park. And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of board of counsel on which I am now about to enter. Perform the duties. Of counsel. On which I am now about to enter, so help me God.
Thank you, Chrissy. All right, now you can call the roll.
Uh, yes, sir. Sorry about that. Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McCure?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. First item of business would be to select a deputy mayor. So, uh, I'll recommend that we continue with Jim Bernard as the deputy mayor. Um, but we will need a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to, uh, elect a deputy mayor being Jim Bernard.
Thank you.
Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, item number six, we have the Avon Park Christmas Classic. This will be a basketball tournament. This is done by the Deep Dig Unlimited, or excuse me, Dig Deep Unlimited LLC. Do we have a rep here on this?
Um, yes, I believe so. But I don't see.
Ms. Paris looks like.
Ms. Paris wasn't able to make it. She was sending someone for her, but I don't see them.
Oh, it's you. Hello. Nice to meet you.
All right, sir, if you will, uh, the microphone there, please give your name and address. Could you mash that button right there at the base of the microphone? When the light's on, it's on.
Yes, Hollis Watt, three ten East Booker Street.
Yes, sir.
Alfred Williams, nine one one South Brunner Avenue.
Yes.
Raymond Jones, two oh six East Second Street, or Joe Hilton Street, excuse.
Okay. Who would like to, uh, bring us on this event?
Um, I would.
All right, and your name again was?
Hollis Watt.
All right. So we've got a basketball tournament here. We can see that you're requesting, uh, the use of a park and you're requesting, looks like a road closure. You got a road closure map, you got your certificate of insurance there, and you're also requesting, uh, the city to waive the fees. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so on the issue of waiving the fees, uh, you're made aware that the, we can't waive the fees for anything. It's not a five oh one C three.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make that clear upfront. Um, do you want to tell us about the event?
Uh, yes, it's a tournament. It's basically a community event. Um, the, uh, I guess we're, um, from eighteen and up, uh, we're giving away free drinks, we're giving away bikes for the kids and stuff, you know.
Have you ever had an event like this before?
Yes, sir.
And where, where was that done? Was that in Highlands County? Okay.
Yeah.
But in Avon Park?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how long ago was that?
Uh, from two thousand five to two thousand and ten or eleven.
Okay, so you had it every year?
Yes.
Okay, so in those events, I mean, do you have any issues with it? Does it all go off pretty well?
It went smooth.
Okay, all right. Is there anything you'd like to say about the event, or?
Um, we did get in contact with Highlands County, um, sheriff office, and they will be available.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Council have any questions for them?
Nope, I think it's a great idea.
Is this just males or is females?
It's males.
Just male?
Yes, ma'am.
You didn't have any females to participate? I mean, do you have any females even playing on the teams, any of the teams?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so when you went out and advertised, I take it you just advertised for the males?
Was, it's advertised for basketball players.
Okay, but no, no females took you up on it?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Staff have anything to contribute or any questions?
Just who, who would the sheriff's office talk to, just so I can touch base with them?
Uh, they, they told me, uh, um, I did get application. Um, I came here for approval first before I actually fill out application, and because once you fill it out, you have to pay.
Okay, so you're, look, you're gonna hire off-duty deputies there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good.
You're gonna, um, you've been informed about the indemnification insurance requirements?
Yes, sir. Uh, I do have, uh, Raymond here from, Mr. Raymond here from Southside, he might want to say something.
Um, we're with Southside, uh, and we are nonprofit, so we're, right now, we're just, we're gonna partner with them, so we may get that fee waived, because we do also carry insurance, so we're gonna see what we do as far as us partner up with them and, uh, removing the fees.
Okay, so the date is, uh, obviously twelve seventeen.
Yes, sir.
So that looks like it's before, or, or excuse me, it's after our next meeting, so there would be an opportunity to meet with us again.
Yeah, we're trying to get on agenda.
Can I add something, please?
The, the only fees we have in parks is a pavilion. It's only twenty-five dollars.
Okay, okay.
And, and, uh, aside from that also, it, it's not just a nonprofit, but it has to be a five oh one C three nonprofit. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
Arnold Davis, twelve fourteen South Carolina Avenue, Avon Park. Uh, about the fees, uh, could they use my five oh one C three? And you got one? Okay, I was trying to see about getting the fees waived, waived, because they just been a little slight doing this program, but they normally do it every year about this time, and, uh.
So, Mr. Davis, before you go, obviously, you're familiar with the event?
Yes.
And you're an outside person, so what, what is your perspective on the event? Is it a good event?
I, I think it's good for the community. They bring a lot of kids out and whatnot, and and, and then they get a chance to mentor.
Okay.
Which is needed.
Very good. All right, so the time of the event will be nine A M. to six P M., so from a staff perspective, would somebody be around to be able to open the road back up? Mark?
What day was seventeen?
December seventeenth.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Saturday.
Saturday.
What is it, just a matter of cones that marks off the, the street?
To shut down a street, we have to put signs up, so someone's gonna have to come pick them up, so it'd be overtime.
Okay.
Right, and it's not the entire street, it's just where the housing stops on the street to the other end of the court, so it's not the entire street, so residents will be able to get in and out.
Okay. All right, does council have any other questions?
Yep.
Um, just your insurance says that you're, you're gonna have thirty attendees. Is it actually thirty players, and then you have everyone watching?
Right. The actual, um, court is, we know it's thirty players on this.
Yeah, Jerry, you seen the issue there?
No, no, we've got the insurance identification. I think they're
All right.
They're gonna have security, which is good.
Sure. All right, well, if there's no other questions, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve item number, uh, B six for the Christmas Classic Basketball Tournament and waive all city fees.
Okay, um, in order to waive the fees, we would have to have a five oh one C three there, so.
Yeah, they have a five oh one C three. He's gonna provide that to the city manager, right, or, or Christie.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. There's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have fun.
All right, item number seven, we have the Spring of Palooza. It's be the Avon Park Mall Festival with the Heartland Helping Hands. See Sherry there? Please give your name and address for the record.
We're back. Sherry Eason, um, four oh one Lime Tree Drive, Sebring, Florida.
Shane Eason, four oh one Lime Tree Drive, Sebring, Florida.
What can we do for you?
Actually, we're here for a couple of things tonight, and I see we're, uh, both back to back on the agenda.
Yep, let's start with the Avon Park Mall Festival.
All right, Avon Park Mall Festival, uh.
Set microphone on, I think.
Just push the button. You don't have to hold it.
I'm just really tall, I think.
There you go.
Um, Avon Park Mall Festival, uh, Spring of Palooza, we, uh, attempted to bring it back last year and, uh, couldn't quite get things underway. Um, we are going to, once again, attempt to bring it back for twenty twenty-three. Uh, we're looking at the weekend of, uh, March twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, uh, which is a week after the races. Um, and we've been actually talking, uh, we talked to Deputy Hood, uh, after the last council meeting, and after speaking with some other people. Um, we had originally planned on closing the inside lanes only of Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it seems that the general consensus would be it would be better to shut down both lanes of Main Street in both directions. From, I don't remember the name of the road, what is it?
Museum Avenue there.
La Verona Avenue to Central, basically.
It's Museum Avenue, okay, yeah.
We must be using museum avenue for the car show. We would not use McDonald's in Park, and we would be taking it down just past, isn't that Bill Owens? Just past that. We did originally want to take it down to the, um, the county tax collector's office, but in past years, vendors didn't really want to go down that far. Plus, it also opens up the roads more, and there's not gonna be any problems with traffic if we only take it down to La Verona.
Be able to detour, yep. Okay, I mean, historically, that, that is, uh, where it was, right?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
There was a few years it came further down this way, but to my recollection, which that's been quite a few years ago.
Sure.
You seem to start trailing off vendors as you, as you got further down towards City Hall.
Yeah.
Then, obviously, your, your central hub is Lake and Main.
So have you guys got a consensus of, uh, what type of support there is out there for the vendors? Do you have people already signed up, or?
Yes.
We have, we have quite a few vendors that have already made their intentions, uh, known to us that they intend to be here, one way or another.
Official approval before they submit their applications and their payments and all that. We have, um, a lot of volunteers. We are also, we are going to be partnering with Heartland Culture Alliance and the, um, CRA as well. They have asked if they could join us so that we could make it a joint effort with the organizations to kind of unite the community, so we were very thankful for that.
Okay, so you met with the CRA Advisory Board, then?
Not yet. Um, they called us this past week and asked if they could be a part of everything. Um, actually, I spoke with Galen Thomas from the CRA, and she kind of spoke for everybody.
Yeah, she's, she's with the, uh.
Too many initials.
Okay. Well, in order to get official support from the CRA, you'll have to meet with the actual board themselves, which is us, and we haven't met on this, so.
Okay.
We'll have to do that. Um, so obviously, uh, you guys have a five oh one C three, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got your insurance and everything?
Yes.
Okay. So the road closure, obviously, we'll have to, uh, put that to the D O T, make sure that they're okay with it, but, um, I don't see an issue with it. I mean, this was a, a really big event for years and years. A lot of people were sad to see it go, so we're happy that it's coming back and hopefully it works out.
Can we, um, get an official approval?
Yeah, well.
So that we can not vendor out.
I, I'm sure there's gonna be discussion back and forth, and we'll need a motion.
Well, I'm just, not just that, but I guess it's gonna be subject to D O T approving the closure as well, because that, they really, it's their road.
Yes, and we do need to resubmit that form. The copy that you have only shows us requesting to close the inside lanes. We spoke with the insurance company as well as, um, um, the sheriff's department, and they are highly recommending that we close both lanes. You've always got the, the little ones, the parents not paying attention, you know.
Hundred percent agree.
Nobody wants that on their conscience.
No. So is this gonna be both sides, east side and west side?
Yes.
So four lanes, all, we're utilizing all four?
Yes, on the event itself would actually only be on the median. Um, the lanes would be closed for safety as well as the patrons going up and down the street themselves.
Right.
The vendors would be on the edge of the grass, so that all the walking and stuff is on the streets.
That also allows the businesses on Main Street to remain open to the patrons of Spring of Palooza as well.
Sure.
Yeah, and I, I would like to reach out to them just so they do know what's going on, so they can actively participate.
Yes.
In it and bring out their own goods or their own sales or whatever they would like to do.
Yes, we've already been discussing with some of them, and some of them are actually going to set up out front of their store to kind of, you know, lure people in, so that's kind of what we're hoping this is gonna do. We wake up downtown Avon Park, we might get some of those buildings go over here.
And to make sure that you notify, uh, the emergency staff as well, yeah, and paramedics, as well as the, the fire department. That's their main thoroughfare, so they'll need to make plans for that.
Okay.
All right, anything from staff, uh, any concerns?
No concern, just it's three days. Are you looking to close down all of Main Street for all three days, and you're gonna have all the stuff out there?
All of Main Street would be closed while the event is in process. We could move the cones and allow people to go through, but historically, that's not the way it's been done.
Yeah, because it's more than just cones. Now F dot's making us do a heck of a lot more.
Right.
You just can't throw cones up for liability, so that's just something you're gonna need to get me on. I mean, if you're gonna close it on Friday at ten A M. and not open it up till Sunday at six o'clock, you're gonna have all Main Street shut down, so. Right.
From, in that one block, from, uh, not one block, but.
Right, from there, you got, you're right.
Yes.
Yeah, and the reason we decided to do it where we did is because with Central Avenue, you still have north-south access, and with La Verona, you still have north-south access through Pleasant and east-west access through Pleasant Bell.
But your vendors are still gonna stay out there. They're not gonna pack up and leave and come back.
No, they're not gonna pack up and leave every night.
Probably the road's gonna have to be shut down the whole time.
Right.
And, um, we also are with the understanding, we have to have, um, after our security through Ohio County Sheriff's Office, which we've already spoken to them, so they're gonna assist us with getting off-duty officers for, um, security at nighttime, so that vendors don't have to pack up and.
Perfect. That was my next question. Anything from council?
Have you submitted your liability insurance to the city yet?
Yes, ma'am. We are already on, um, record with that, and Avon Park is listed as additional insured on our policy. I spoke with them today to ask if there was any additional insurance needed, because this was gonna be a large event, and they said not unless there was anything dangerous, and we don't have anything dangerous going on. The activities, um, that we have, you know, the, uh, we're trying to do a five K, um, like tug-of-war for, you know, things like that, you know, dance-offs. It's all, as the lady referred to it with the insurance agency, it's all considered family picnic day, family fun day. That's how that's categorized, because we don't have any machinery going, no fireworks, no bounce houses, no nothing that someone could get hurt on. So if somebody slips and falls when they're doing tug-of-war, well, they need to wear better tennis shoes. It's not, you know, something that we gave them a dangerous environment that caused this to happen.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So have you spoken to the vendors to see if they're willing to stay out there for three days?
Yes, ma'am. That was why we went from two days to three days. Most of them were willing to commit to three. They didn't feel it would be worth their time for a day and a half, is basically what it would have been originally, and they felt that they would. We were getting a lot of people that were saying, well, maybe in a few years when it gets bigger. Well, we have an amazing, um, lady on our board who said, look, Palladium Festival is always three days, and she named up to her three other events. They get a lot more positive feedback from their vendors, so that was why we opted for that. We want Friday to be, um, kind of geared around our senior citizen day, because that the kids are gonna be in school, and most people, you know, in working age is gonna be at work during the day. Saturday would be your official family day, and Sunday is just gonna be kind of a little more relaxed, not as many activities, more browsing, and it would not start until after church, so a Sunday would be from twelve to five, Friday and Saturday would be eleven to seven. We don't want anything interrupting with church services or anything like that.
Okay.
Um, exactly what is it that CRA said that they're gonna do?
Nothing as of yet. We were only asked if they could join us in pulling this off.
Join us how?
Um, they would like to be a part of it by doing some events there themselves, by participating, helping us plan. It has not been completely discussed yet, and we told them we had to present it to our board, which we were supposed to do last night, and our board meeting ran way late, and we didn't get to that part, but what we have all discussed on the board is we would come up with all the activities and events we're gonna have, and let each organization choose what they think that they would be best at doing. So what we were thinking was, since, um, H D is more involved with seniors and art and stuff like that, then we would kind of focus their involvement on entertainment for the seniors and maybe anything doing with art, of course. Anyway, so it hasn't been, there's been no official meeting about this yet.
Right.
Only a phone call from Galen saying they would like to be a part of it, and we are all for it. We have decided yes.
Okay.
Plus, the CRA meeting was canceled last week because of storm, so they could have met then.
There's been no official CRA action.
No.
We'll bring it up at the next board meeting. For the record. Okay, anything else? Any other questions? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number B seven for the Spring of Palooza in Avon Park, uh, with the, um, traffic changes, closures.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions?
Uh, just as I point out, it is subject to D O T's approval, obviously.
Correct. All right, seeing no other comments, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, Christmas on the Mall.
Okay, this one is short and sweet. Um, we are just asking for permission, and please wait to have Heartland Helping Hands. We'll have a tent there for our organization for fundraising. We will have hot cocoa, roast beefs. We have a Grinch theme going on. Our roast beefs is full pork. Um, we're gonna have, um, coffee, cocoa, roast beefs, and, uh, like popcorn and cotton candy. We're also inviting the project grad from Avon Park High School to also put up a tent. And we are working on, um, the licensing to, um, show the viewing for the kids of the Grinch movie.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, that's it. That's all we're doing, and all of this is outside of the, the, um, gazebo lighting. We're going to be setting up our stuff at five o'clock, but the gazebo lighting, to my understanding, is gonna be at six o'clock, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
We are gonna be on the median beside that. We do not want to interfere with what's going on with that, but we will be on the next median down, which I believe is where the Veterans Memorial is.
Mm-hmm.
So there will be one tent there, and then, um, also, I believe project grad is gonna be on that same section, maybe a little bit further down.
Okay.
And then down by Dana Seventy's office, she has asked us if we could put another tent. We are working on being able to do that. We're trying to get some more volunteers to run a second tent. That is all we have planned.
Very good. Very good. We're all looking forward to how the gazebo gets lit this year.
So is this event gonna be in the middle, in the median, or you said on the, on the side?
In the median, uh, one median up from the gazebo itself, because we don't want to interfere with the gazebo light.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay. And the movie watching is gonna be underneath the tent?
No, it wouldn't be underneath the tent. We would have a, um, a project, a projector, um, screen, and a small projector, and the kids would bring a little blanket and sit on the glass, uh, at grass and watch it right there in that median where the Veterans Memorial is. That's where we were doing everything for Heartland Helping Hands in that one median, um, so that we were not interfering with other activities. Plus, we want to make sure that we're not soaking up space. People come out early to set up their chairs for the parade.
Right.
And that is, uh, another thing, too. We will have the Grinch there for photos for the kids. Um, that and the movie and stuff, none of that is gonna be taking place during the gazebo lighting. It will not be taking place during the parade itself. All that shuts down. The tent will be open for people to get their hot cocoa and stuff. But there will be nothing going on during the parade or the gazebo lighting.
So it'll be after the movie, it'll be after the parade?
Yeah, well, no, the movie would actually be, um, um, at five o'clock before the gazebo lighting and everything.
Right.
And, um, it's kind of to keep the kids occupied, so they're not running around during.
Exactly, and the gazebo lighting doesn't take very long. It's just a minor shutdown, do the event, and then get right back to it, so it's not a big deal. I think it'll be good.
Awesome.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve B eight for the Christmas on the Mall.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
A motion in a second, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
To the Eastons, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Forward to it.
Guys, and a little bit later in the future to, um, bug y'all for some more stuff.
All right, looking forward to it.
Come on.
Thanks so much. And by the way, congratulations, Mayor Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'll be get some sleep soon.
All right, item number nine, we have an event request for the L C F Foundation Five K Race with Road Closures. Mr. Cash Jackson?
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm on Zoom. Um, yeah, so this is our third annual L C five K. It's benefiting the L C five Foundation. The L C five Foundation was formed three years ago. Um, we work with Avon Park High School, Avon Park Middle School to raise funds, um, and we donate those back in scholarships to students graduating from the high school, um, kids in need at the high school. Um, we do, we're in the process of funding, helping fund at the Avid Program to, uh, give the Avid Program, uh, monetary gains, so they can go take kids on, uh, college tours, and also try to connect them with our private sponsors within the community, um, to try to set up internships and labor after high school for the ones that aren't attending college. Um, this is one of four events for us. We do a golf tournament, a bass tournament, this five K, and then our, uh, annual sponsorship gala. Um, we're gonna be doing this January twenty-first. We typically have between a hundred and a hundred and fifty people. Um, we've worked with the city in the past, and they've waived fees for labor to put out the cones, uh, to close the roads. We're looking at having the event, um, eight o'clock to twelve, eleven o'clock in the morning. Um, we, is that all I need? Yeah. So, um, we'll be doing the same path as the Jingleville Run, starting at Union Congregation, um, running up to Main Street, down to Anoka, back down to Hendricks, and then up to, uh, on, uh, Lake Avenue where that road that takes you to Park Elementary is, and then back, so.
Yeah, so obviously, the L C five Foundation is a five oh one C three, right?
Yes, sir. Yep.
You have your insurance all in place?
Yes, sir. I think it's the two million dollar coverage is what you guys require. We sent it in with our thing else.
Very good. Any other questions for Cash?
Yeah, have he submitted his insurance to the city?
Yes, what he just said, yes. Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Motion to approve, we.
I just have a question.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Go ahead with your question.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, this is gonna start at Union or, right, and then it's gonna start down. They're gonna have both lanes again, right? They're not just gonna close off one side?
Yes, ma'am, it'll be both ways.
Okay, okay, that's all I was asking about.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second, call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up would be the consent agenda. This would be the minutes from October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item number Steve Ten, the minutes of October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, please.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or changes? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item number eleven, we have resolution number twenty twenty two dash thirty one. This will be adopting the revised budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one dash twenty twenty two. Melody?
Yes, uh, this is a requirement by state statute every year to revise our fiscal year budget uh by November thirtieth. Um, the exhibit A in your packet reflects the revised budget in the amount of thirty nine million, five hundred and forty thousand and ninety dollars. It includes all revisions that we did um previously throughout the year and it also includes an addition of sixty thousand dollars to the sanitation department for landfill payments and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the airport fund um for the fam agreement and for the AIP council.
All right, any questions for Melody? We'll go ahead and read this in the record.
You have it?
I do. Resolution of City of Avon Park of Highlands County, Florida, adopting the revised budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one dash twenty twenty two, providing for an effective date. Whereas the City of Avon Park of Highlands County, Florida, on November fourteenth, twenty twenty two, held a public hearing as required by Florida statute two hundred point zero six five, and whereas the City of Avon Park of Highlands County, Florida, set forth the appropriations and revenue estimate for the revised budget of for fiscal year twenty twenty one dash twenty twenty two in the amount of thirty nine million, five hundred and forty thousand, ninety dollars, exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Avon Park, Florida, that number one fiscal year twenty twenty one dash twenty twenty two revised budget be adopted. Number two, this resolution will be taken, will take effect immediately upon its adoption duly adopted at a public hearing this fourteenth day of November twenty twenty two. All right, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number D eleven, resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty one, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any last questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passive.
Thank you. Up next, item twelve, we have resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty two.
Resolution of the City of Avon Park, Highlands County, Florida, adopting a revised CRA budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty two, providing for effective date.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Melly.
Okay, again, um by state statute, we are required to revise the CRA budget to reflect um use of all the funds that we have in the reserves and that that's what this resolution does.
Okay. Any questions about this resolution? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve item number D twelve, resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty two, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passive.
Item number thirteen, this will be award the RFQ number twenty two dash oh eight for professional engineering services for the design of drinking water system infrastructure projects. Melody, I see your name there. Are you briefing us?
Yes, I am. So um as you are aware, the city uh applied for and received a Florida Department of Economic Opportunity grant um in March of twenty twenty two. Um, the, this RFQ is for engineering services related to that grant. Um, the total um engineering expenses in the grant is ninety six thousand dollars. Um, we had two respondents, um, Kimley Horn and Cool and Cobb. Staff um ranked um each company and they chose Kimley Horn got the highest ranking. They got two hundred and seventy five um points out of three hundred and Cool and Cobb Engineering got two hundred and fifty nine points out of three hundred. Um, and we have Jameson Tendrove from Kimley Horn on the Zoom. If you have any questions?
Do we have any questions for Jameson?
I have a Jameson now.
Okay, you have any questions in general?
I have a question for Rick Reed. Is he here? Um, I was just kind of wondering why, under the criteria of number of favorable client references, why the Cool and Cobb is rated so much lower than uh Kimley Horn? Is there an explanation for that?
Well, they're all individual scores and they have to look at it. Um, tha- that's their decision when they see how many have put in for each of them.
I think it's the, the amount of uh, the amount of letters received and the weight of who was writing the letter, the size of project, I was.
What it comes down to is purely subjective.
Correct, right. Well, all of the letters for both companies are included in our packet, I believe, so.
Yeah, it looks like Kimley Horn had four respondents and Cool and Cobb only had two.
Yeah, right. Well, I'd like to make a couple of comments on this. Um, first of all, Kimley Corn- Corn is a very large corporation, engineering company that we've used many, many times, including this year. They've always done fantastic job. They have a, a large amount of employees that are qualified, maybe even overqualified. And I, I personally have never had a problem with any of the work that they have done and I'm grateful for the fact that they are here. But with that being said, since the bid is the same amount and especially a small amount, there, there's even other bids later on that's gonna go to Kimley Horn. I think in my opinion, in this case, I'd rather give this to uh an Avon Park firm. I think it's a small amount. I think it's uh they deserve the work. I think they're qualified to do the work. They proved it to me. And so uh if, if you're ready, I'll make a motion to prove them over Kimmy Horn, nothing, uh disrespect towards them. I know they would do a good job, great job. This is good of a job. But I think this time, I, I think we should stay home with Avon Park this time. Give them that. It's not a big, large amount. Jimmy Horn's already gotten millions of dollars this year already, so that's who I pick. I pick him, I cool a cop.
Well, let's uh have out the rest of the discussion before any motions remain, please.
Okay.
All right, Mark, uh, you had mentioned that there was two grants. Uh, Kimley Horn had was looking at receiving this one and there was another one that was already awarded or was going to be awarded?
No, it was the one for the fire station. These are the two DEO grants we were awarded. And the fire station for the engineering went to Cool and Cobb.
Okay.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes.
I've seen Cool and Cobb come through here quite regularly myself and I think that we do award them quite a bit of bids that come through here. And so.
We work extensively with both companies. I mean, there's, there's no denying that.
But find, find firms in their boat, but I, I gotta say that your, your process is a CCNA um and your, your selection process was where you had a selection committee select them and rank them and really um um at this point, it's fairly per- perfunctory, but to assign, you know, um points for local, you don't have that, I'm aware of any local preference type of additional points. If it were, then that would have to have been assigned as part of the points of this, of the um allocation under the, under the um scoring sheet. And uh so uh at this point, we can't say, well, local preference takes prefer- precedence over everything else.
Right. Well, I would just simply say that, you know, both firms have their specialties, right? And uh, you know, Kimmy Horn, like you say, is, is a very large company. And their specialty seems to be uh with some of these more intense projects, you know, Cool and Cobb has done in insurmountable things for the city of Avon Park. They've done, you know, hundreds and hundreds of, of, of smaller projects and even big projects. It's just that their scope of work, according to our scoring people, which are the people who we employ to as experts for these types of projects, uh, all went through there and systematically scored them as the highest ranking company for various reasons, but you can see in there that most of it comes down to the, the amount of experience and the type of customers that they've handled in the past. This project that we're talking about is not a, a small project. It's a very big drawn out thing and I, I think we need to go with the most qualified company regardless of where they come from. I, I would care less if they came from Malaysia. If it's the best company and gonna do the best job, that's what we should do and that's what our scoring people have systematically went through there and identified them as the most highly ranked people for this job. So I think that's what we should be doing.
Have they all submitted the same proposal, same amount?
It's ninety six thousand dollars regardless, so that's just what's in the grant.
Mayor, can I just add some?
Please.
Kind of add to what Deputy Mayor's saying is, is staff knows I'm always saying we're gonna not forget our local engineers, including Polston. They, they receive a lot. Um, one thing is that uh Kimley Horn, I know they're huge nationwide and all that, but they're the ones that did our master plans and everything. They probably know our water systems better than anybody. And certainly not that, that Carl Mason couldn't do that. We know they can. But another thing is, this is a DEO grant and they look at these things very closely and actually Guardian, who's overseeing a grant for us with DEO, they're the ones that gave what the scoring is and that out to us. So I would not want to get in trouble with the DEO on this. I hear what the Deputy Mayor's saying and then Rick will tell you, I'm always on him. Hey, how about getting, reaching out to Carl? How about reaching out to Paulson? We've been giving Paulson some stuff, so. Right. You know, I, I think the world of Carl, known for years, does a great job, Mason too, but in this case, they, in staff's opinion and mine and seeing it, that the most qualified for this is, is, is Kimmy Horn. And like you had me point out, they're, that, that Cool and Cobb did get the, the other one to do the fire station. And they were the ones to do that because they're the ones to help us out and knew the scope on that. So I think we got both firms the right ones for the right, right jobs. And, and we have to do it right also because somebody's gonna have to certify that we did this procurement properly and that someone's gonna be me. So I, I want to make sure that you do it. Well, well, with that too, it, it, to do something like this, to jump over someone probably more qualified just because they have more than that. We want, when we put these out, the RFQs are bids and that, the, the bigger ones are not gonna put in because they're just gonna say, hey, you're taking these, these local guys.
Right.
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
No, but I appreciate the comments.
Do we have a?
I understand that.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award RFQ twenty twenty, twenty two dash zero eight for professional engineering services for the design of the drinking water system infrastructure project to Kimley Horn.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next up, we have the award of the ITB twenty two dash oh nine daycare center roof replacement. I see Rick's name there, but as.
Yeah, Rick's six, so.
Okay.
The rest of us get to fill in for him. Um, this one out to bid, um, if, if you've had a chance to read what the our purchasing agent wrote, he wrote exactly what happened here. The, the lowest bid um was not responsive in the fact that they, it said that you had to put your permitting in the price and they excluded it. I had him reach out to Jerry and said Jerry will probably have him reach out to the contract attorney. They did and they said, no, that's, that's, both of them said that's non-responsive. So we went with the, the next lowest bid. Um, Rogers Roofing, and this is for the damage that occurred mostly with the hail damage down there.
Hmm.
Um, beat the heck out of it. This is just one of a few things that need to be fixed down there. So we're re- recommending um Rogers Roofing. Our insurance company came back and it wasn't that high, but I had David get with them and they said, whatever you pay to send it to them.
Very good. Any other questions on this? Seeing none? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve D fourteen, award ITB twenty two oh nine daycare center roof replacement.
To Rogers Roofing?
To Roger.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any last questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, this will be the first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty two.
So ordinance vacating, closing a portion of South Lake Boulevard in the city of Avon Park, Florida at the request of adjacent owner, Boston Mining Company, providing for effective date.
Okay. All right, Jerry, your name is there. Do you want to brief us on this action?
Yeah, um, and we have um Justin Ham here from uh Boston Mine representing them as um their engineer. But um we have as a, a um dirt road, which is really an unmaintained dirt road to south end of some property. The developer um um Twin Lakes um is, is um um wanting to um close that road and um we have a utility there, so it's gonna, they're gonna give us an easement for the utility and close the road. And we've worked out the, the details with regard to the routing of the easement and so on. Um, all that's really left is the first reading of this closing. We have a couple of items. We'll have to conclude before the second reading because we have to check title um for the company uh that has to be verified in order for us to get the easement from them. But um uh this um, we recommend that uh you go ahead and approve this closing. We don't have the uh, I defer to, to uh the city manager, but um I believe we have the equipment to maintain this roadway anyway, so um.
Yeah. Okay, do we have any questions for the representative from Boston Mining?
No. Go ahead, go ahead.
Sir, if you could give your name and your company for the record?
Yep. Justin Ham, Kimley Horn, one oh nine South Kentucky Avenue. Um, I believe you guys got, all received the packets that I had. I don't know if you wanted to walk through it. Um, probably kind of easiest to give a little bit of you know, additional background. Appreciate Jerry, appreciate Mark, everything that uh staff has done with us. We've been uh working hand in hand with them uh quite extensively on this for the last several months, trying to uh make sure that we do everything correctly. Um, so if you look there on that uh first page, we've got an aerial of the site. You can see the location of it just north of Lake Lilia. Um, south of Lake Anoka, kind of in between there. There's a portion that runs north, south. Uh, that's the dirt road portion and then a portion that runs east, west as well. Uh, if you move to the next page, kind of shows the uh highlights the area that we're looking to vacate. Um, there on the south end there, that's all that, the dirt road that's um, you guys are I'm sure aware of everything that's been going down as far as the, the county used to own it and maintain it. Um, they then uh transferred it to the city. They decided that they didn't want to maintain it anymore, uh, didn't want to own it. Transferred it to the city for you guys to uh own and maintain. And uh so now we're, we're looking to actually request uh to vacate it as a part of um some of the continued effort that we are uh providing onsite. So you gotta go to the next page. You could see the direct city taxpayer benefits uh as mentioned. There's no, be no longer any road maintenance that the county used to own, transferred it to the city. Um, obviously there would have to be uh grading that's done continuously. It's, right now it's just um base material that's down there. So over time that spreads out, you've got to come in, you've got to kind of uh compress it, compact it, um tighten that up. So otherwise it kind of spreads out as time goes on. So that's uh some continual maintenance. And then as a part of this as well, um we've been working with Rick and uh his team and uh had identified that uh for you guys, that this area was a good location. There's a um lift station that's up off of Tulane. The Tulane Lift Station, that's actually right at capacity there. Uh, and so in discussion with Rick and things, uh, the city had asked that we uh add a, a sixty by eighty tract for a future lift station uh to be able to go there uh to not only uh take on some additional flows and things of the community, but also to help alleviate some of that uh, that, that overcapacity or at-capacity lift station there on Tulane. And then as Jerry mentioned, we've got a twenty foot easement. There's an existing force main that's out there. We'll be providing that easement to the city to be able to maintain and continue to operate it without any kind of um relocation efforts in that. Some other benefits to the city and to the residents, uh right pedestrian safety that as we go through this development, there'll be people that are, that are out there that are utilizing the amenities that we're gonna have on site. There's gonna be golf carts and walking, people walking to the dog parks, people going to the tennis courts, the pool, there's some docks. Uh, there's a lot of, a lot of amenities. It's very attractive. Uh, the, the amount of effort that the developers looking to put into that, they, they pride themselves on that. And so with that, we also want the, the, the people who are within that community to feel safe and feel like they can actually um make it to those locations without cars flying by them, uh without having to cross any roads and, and, and create a hazard to that. Uh, another thing that we have is continual cleanup out there. Uh, as you can see in that picture, the top picture to the right is a, is an actual picture of the road. You can see there's a car, a shopping car, tire in the background, that kind of stuff. Um, so far to date, within the last couple of months, there's been about six dumpsters worth of trash that's been removed out there. Uh, and then a couple of cars as well. So there's a lot of um, a lot of debris out there, a lot of things that the city would have to be maintaining, keeping up with. So one of those things. And then we have community support as well. We've talked to uh several members of the community. Uh, one of the letters that we've actually attached to this and, and including that picture that they mentioned that there's broken mailboxes from people driving through there. There's ATVs. Uh and and dirt bikes that are racing out through there, again, trash, reckless driving. So uh we think that it's a a benefit to. Not only the the people around the area, but also to the city to close this uh to vacate this this right away. So.
Okay.
We appreciate you taking that time and I'll I'm here to address any questions that you may have.
We have any questions for the gentleman?
I have a a lot of questions for you, please. First of all, I I'm assuming that your plan is in plan on being annexed into the city of Avon Park, correct?
Uh, the property is annexed into the city.
Yeah, okay. So do you understand and realize that road we're talking about is used daily by the residents of the South Side community? And so you're going to block that road off so they don't have access to twenty seven, which they've been using for multiple, multiple years?
Over eighty.
Well, they they do actually have access. So Hal McCray is just to the north, just to the north of our property. There's one parcel there and it also provides full access.
Let me ask you this then. Are you going to have access from that development to twenty seven besides Hal McCray?
From from our development here? Yes, through um Marble Avenue.
Would you want to have that pace blocked off so those those people couldn't use it and tell them to go to Hal McCray to get to twenty seven? Would you be able to sell your property that way easily?
I mean, if that was a safer access point, which I believe is because there's actual light there, so um.
Well, let me tell you this. Uh I've talked to many people in that community. They've been using that road for many, many, many years. Not only other citizens using it there, but also our school bus routes go right through there. I was there last week, multiple school buses go there. So now you're going to turn around and ask our school buses to go either way. You team seem to think that they can go back to Hal McCray that is just sort of like a literally spit taken extra minute or two. But at the same time, the houses, development, the street that is right next to yours, it's going to take a lot longer to go back to Hal McCray. Maybe those that are one road south of Hal McCray, maybe no big deal, but from Hal McCray to that area, at least half of those people are going to use. Use their property, that road daily. So I actually suggest that maybe developer do something with that road to make it easier for those people that live there. Way before you guys ever came to develop and not me and you, but I'm talking about the developer. To make sure that this access really can use by the people who live in that area. I think it's a priority and I think it's a shame that you guys were willing to do this just to have. A basically a private community that nobody else could come in and use anything. You brag about all the stuff that you're going to give to all those people living there. But you're taking away the access from those neighbors who have been there for many, many years. I don't think that's right or that's fair. And I think when the time comes, the citizens of Avon Park are come up and speak and they'll have the same opinion I do. But I would like to have you take this back to developer and I'd happy to meet with them personally myself to see if there's another way we could get access to those people to make it easier on them. Whether it's to uh do something else with the road, make it a a grass road, uh 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 there's there's got to be other options that are feasible. Even if you made it a dirt sandy road that they could use, that but that you guys could go ahead and uh uh ex- put your money out there, make it accessible. This is going to be a great location. I understand if I was developer, I I would probably want to do the same thing. I want to have private access. So just my people that come in can go in and go out and nobody else can because that was a big selling point. Most of the mobile home parks and most of private communities are like out of off twenty seven, they have no other access to them. So really, nobody goes in. Those private communities because there's no reason to go there. There's no rear access or anything else. This is a completely different situation. This is a situation that has a road that's been there for years and years and years. I was out there just a week ago and cars were going by all day long. In the morning and then late afternoon, not during the rest of the daytime. So it's it's not like a constant use thing. It's very limited use. But it's one that's going to make it very inconvenient for the people that have been living there for years. And to sit there and take this away from them. And try to say go back another three, four, five miles. It's okay if you drive back. It's only a few more minutes out of your way. It's no big deal. I I think that that's wrong. I think the developer needs to look at another option to make it easier for them because these people were here a long way before they came here. And I hope that they come up with a different decision because I think this is a great place for Avon Park. I think it's a way that I've always been pro business, pro residents. It's probably going to be a beautiful community like a community like you said. I can't wait to see it done. But I think we have to remember the people that have lived there. For fifty, hundred, eighty years have been using that road and it's not been a nice road to travel on. I drove on it. It's not nice at all. But I think that maybe I would like to ask your developer to come back with an idea that maybe they can make it. A different options available to make it easier for those people to get somewhere close to there or similar there and make it so it's a community effort. This is a community town of Avon Park. We like to work together, stay together. And uh I understand your reasons why you want to make it private. Because a lot of people like to live in a private community. I understand that, but this is a whole different situation. This is a road that is used regularly. It's also a road by school buses. It takes some of these people to the gas stations, to the grocery stores. Through uh the drugstores, I mean the all kinds of stuff out there. And I think that I would love to be with you or have somebody else meet with you to come up with a different option. To where we can give those people.
On twenty seven, before they took twenty seven and they put the media in it, you can get off of that road. What we call the old dirt road beachfront road and you can get on twenty seven and you can head south. That's a lot of traffic that still comes from south. Of Seabron, take that road to go home every day. My problem I have is the city. So willing to just give you the easement. They've never taken the time to fix the road like they should have a long time ago. And now you want it, you and your company, y'all want it, to come in and make this, you know, this resort, this development. So that now they feel like they get off the off the whatever or not having to do what they should have done eighty years ago. Because we've never stopped using that road. I use it quite often.
I I can't speak for them, but like.
Well, I'm speaking for the city.
I'd like to verify something for the city so that everybody here understands. This road was never owned by the city ever before in history. This road has just been owned by the city as of just what, a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago? It was owned by the county. The city annexed the property, the Boston Mining property, just a handful of years ago. And then at that time, we should have taken over the road. Nobody knew about it, nobody called it. Then whenever this project came about, then it was brought to light of the county saying, wait a minute, we shouldn't be maintaining that road. That's the city's road. So they started the process to give it back to the city. So before you jump on the bandwagon of trashing the city, the city's done nothing wrong. If at any point somebody wants to ask the city for something, it's their right to take it to the council, which is exactly what these people did. So. The city didn't, the city didn't do anything wrong.
Uh then the county just transferred it back to us? Well, we had to make a decision whether we going to.
Well, if you listen, if you actually listen to what I just said about a month ago, the county did give it to the city, but at no point in history did the city own this road before.
Right.
So now that the city owns this road, we have a couple of options. This development has come forward and wanted to, as proposed, that they close down this road and that they make it part of their development. Obviously, everybody's in favor of development in Avon Park. We want more development to come. But if we maintain this road. We're going to either have to buy specialized equipment, which is very, very expensive, and we're going to have to maintain this road ongoing basis forever and ever. Or we have to pave that road, which is also very expensive. So keeping the road as is is probably not a very good option for anyone. It hasn't been well maintained for eighty years, as everyone just said. There was a lot of cars there, there's a lot of trash there, there's a lot of crime there. You can drive down that road anytime you want and just about shake you off that road. So it's not been a great road at any point in my lifetime.
Mayor, can I ask you something? What 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 crime is being committed on that road?
I I would point, I would point you towards the Hounds County Sheriff's Office and at the past records of the Avon Park City Police Department. You can pull up any record you want and you can see exactly how many crimes is done in any part of the city that you like. So look that up yourself.
Oh, they just littered. It's a crime and and there's plenty of litter there in the scene from pictures.
Right. So the the beachfront, uh is that part of Avon Park? No. It's in the county, right?
Correct.
So that entire block right there that's by the beachfront, that is actually part of the county, right?
Correct.
Okay, just want to point that out as well.
So does that mean you probably go have access to that?
They have access to it. So if you close down this road, which accesses literally one gas station, so. I understand everybody has a high horse to jump onto here, but there's one gas station there. So if someone lived at the worst possible spot, which would be the closest point at the corner of Garrett Road. At the beachfront area there, it's literally about a mile and a half difference. That's it. So other than going to that one gas station, where else are you going to go other than to Chaney's Auto Sales?
Oh, Mayor.
Or to the dog place?
Mayor, there's a gas station there, there's apartments there, there's some of the people on the south side. If they don't live there, their relatives live there. There, there's twenty seven that you can access there. There's more than just a gas station there.
We also have College Drive if you go the other direction. So they've got literally one, one mile, one direction.
We're going to have to stop the back.
And one mile the other direction. Um I just have one question since you're standing up here. Um are there going to be, is your development actually going to the lake? Will there be, part of the property will be on this, in other words, on this side of where the closed, the road?
Again, we're going to have to stop talking in the crowd.
Safety concerns, right? Is because if there's a road that's going through there, we've got development on both sides. People are, like I said, are trying to use the amenities that are going to be central to the site. They're walking to the pool, driving their golf carts with their kids, dog parks, all that kind of stuff. And you've got a road that's running through there, people flying through there, obviously creates safety concerns.
Right. Well, I mean, my my personal opinion is. Because we're we're all about Avon Park growing and we are putting in these new businesses and we're putting in, we need more places to live and things like that. And so there's always a catch twenty two. There's always going to have to be something that you're going to have to give up in order to get something else. And so I feel like driving a mile this way, which, you know, I understand you guys being upset about it and things like that, and it may. Take me off if I live there too, I'm not sure. However, in the grand scheme of what's good for Avon Park. Sometimes there are things that we have to be willing to give up in order to have new and better things come in. Because there there may be a lot of these these residents and future residents and family members of these individuals who may want to live in that development.
Exactly. They should be able to have that same route. Why? Because they live there that you have to shut it off. Why is it, like you said, I'm hoping they come there and do all this big wonderful thing. That area can show enough use it. But why do you have to close it off just because some of these residents may live there?
I think because it has been prone to littering and people dumping things. And if this is a mobile home park and say you have elderly people that are are moving there, it's impossible for an elderly person to get safely across that road. If you have A T Vs whizzing down sixty miles an hour to get out of the way.
Miss McGuire, I'm I'll be honest, you know, I brought up the the A T V while back. I'd rather have them back there on that back dirt road than to have them on the streets.
Not, not if they, not if people are living there.
I'm not saying when people live in there. He came up to the podium and he made a point that that's where the A T V go, go back there, whatever. I'd rather them be back there. I'd rather them be back on that dirt road before the development. I'm talking about right now. If they was going to go somewhere, I'd rather them be back there.
But regardless, the development, the development is coming in, so it's no longer going to look how it does now. So for A T Vs to be going down that road with the development on both sides of the road is dangerous. For people to be dumping things. On both sides of that road is dangerous. So if this development is coming in and they are willing to make a change. And put in something for the good of Avon Park, how many citizens or how many uh units do you have in this development?
Three hundred and twenty six.
Okay, so three hundred and twenty six units for Avon Park that people have been crying out for, needing places to live. And he's providing three hundred and twenty six. However, for the safety of those three hundred and twenty six, we may need to cut off a portion of road. There are two other access points. There is one to the north, there is one to the south. This road leads out to Chaney's Auto Sales. I'm not sure how many times you visit Chaney's Auto Sales. However, when you actually go through Hal McCray, that's where the stores are.
And where the red light is.
And the red light to get safely across twenty seven.
People still use that route.
I understand that and I understand that it may be a little irritating. It may go south on twenty seven, they can go down to College Drive as well. And go down College Drive to a red light, which is the safest option to get onto twenty seven and goes south.
And you agree they can also use South Bird Boulevard too. They can still use that road even after he do his development. Everybody know when the new development comes in, you know, you got to, you got to conform. You got to get in line with what's going on out there. But what I'm saying is just because his company decided to come and open up a new development, that doesn't mean, I got five hundred signatures. Right now, they say they don't want that road closed. And I hope y'all take that in consideration like you took in consideration when we was talking about the um. The um homely shelter because there was three people, four people, opposed to five streets. You had five people made the decision that you didn't want this the the shelter open, opposed to five people that live on five. Um I'm sorry, opposed to five different streets of people.
There were a lot of issues with the organization of that entire project and why I said that. However, that's already been discussed.
That is not what that was said up here. It was because who was in the audience and what they said. I'm just saying there, I hope we, I hope we be there because that.
Ma'am. Ma'am.
Do not want this road closed.
I I have one question.
No, Jared, no, no, no. Stop. Everyone stop. Listen, we're talking about the vacancy of this road. We're not talking about anything else.
Well, I was just comparing.
At the end, at the end, you can compare whatever you want under citizen.
I was just comparing. Your only problem I have with you when I'm saying so that you don't like, you want to pick up your gavel. And you want to hit because you don't like what I'm saying. Really? I have a right to talk as well as everybody else.
You have a right to talk about the topic at hand.
I was just comparing.
If everyone's allowed to go off on any tangent they want, it devolves into chaos. You have to abide by the rules. So that way you can keep a coherent meeting, keep it together, get through this subject, okay? Everyone will be allowed to be.
Very coherent until you start, until you start the talk out.
That's your opinion, but I'm telling you, as as the moderator of this meeting, it was not.
Okay.
Okay?
May I ask the gentleman just one question?
Sure.
That was brought up about the fact that to the south of this road we're talking about is the lake front. You said this community, but you're saying you're also going to build homes there, right?
Correct, on the south side of the 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 vacated property.
Right, you're going to, they're going to be built all the way to the lake.
Well, within, within a portion of the lake, yes.
So basically, anybody that desires to even walk through that community will not be able to get to that lake anymore because of re trespassing. Is that correct?
Yes.
You're allowed as a Florida citizen to walk anywhere up to the one hundred year high water mark. In a navigable lake.
You mean in a private area?
In a navigable lake. That's a navigable lake, has a boat round.
Okay, thank you.
You can walk all around it if you so choose.
And I just wanted to to reiterate too and highlight the fact that we are looking at the the lift station that's on the north side. That through this process would also give benefit to the city that's at capacity, that would then be able to, on that property. A future lift station will be able to go to provide additional capacity for uh the what's actually there now.
Sure. So obviously, this community is is a gated community, is it not?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be fenced, yes.
Okay, so on the, on the uh. Right away that is proposed there. The one for the utility easement, I believe it was, was it sixty feet wide or twenty feet?
Uh over the force main or each one currently or?
I'm talking about what's the proposed.
Oh, it it the existing is sixty, but the proposed is a twenty foot easement over that force main that's there, that's located there. They're working with Rick and Mark and Jerry on all that.
So obviously, I was seeing power lines that go through there as well. Is that all on that same track?
So if you look at there, you can actually see the the utility easement that's highlighted in yellow there is actually the the Duke power lines there. We've actually coordinated with them, contacted them, went through their whole process. They reviewed everything, made sure we're not impacting their stuff. Um and so they they.
So on that same map, you're talking about the the same page that has the uh the road grader on it as well? The yellow road grader. You do you have the same handout that we had?
Yes, yeah, there's so so not, so not on that one, but on the one right before that.
Okay.
The one right before that has the the yellow which shows the.
Okay.
That yellow there is the.
All right, so that's where the power lines are.
Yep, so the power.
And that's twenty feet wide?
The power line?
Yeah.
The the power line is a hundred foot and overlaps.
Okay.
So it's pretty, pretty big.
Okay, so obviously, you're not, are you going to build homes underneath that?
No, sir, we're staying, we have to stay out of there with the with the house. We've got, I think, two roads that kind of come through there. Um that run perpendicular to it, like I said, that we've sent to to Duke and they've reviewed it and they came back with comments, we've adjusted it and improved it, so.
So is there any recreation or anything that's going to be used on that property or?
That's under the the Duke easement. They'll have access to be able to walk back and forth through there, but I mean, it would just be open areas.
Would the public have access to it, walk back and forth through there?
Uh, public would not. I mean, it's it's fenced off around there. I mean, I don't think Duke wants them walking around on the power lines either, but.
Sure. Well, what I'm getting at is would it be possible to maybe have a service road that goes through there that's fenced on both sides? Since it already has to remain open anyway.
I think the preference would be not because it it allows access to the community. Uh again, the amenity center is on the. Uh, again, the amenity center is on the north side of that, and we've got residents on the south side, so again, it would limit that access to be able to walk through, ride the cars. We've got a dog park on the south side and on the north side, so it would be crossover within the community that you wouldn't want cars flying in there back and forth, again, the safety concerns.
Got it. So obviously, uh, this process requires two readings, uh, so we can make adjustments and changes, uh, at any time before the second reading is completed. Um, so I would just simply ask you, obviously you see that there's, there's pushback here and that there's a, there's a need for access there, so I would simply suggest as a way that everybody could win there, uh, for you to go to your contractor and see if they would be willing to put in some type of a road through there that would be fenced on both sides. Uh, that way you can maintain the security of your neighborhood and then just, you would have to have some type of a gate that your citizens could then also go through, just as a suggestion.
Okay, I like that idea.
Great idea.
All right, any other questions?
Is this motion going to basically, guys having the easements, going to be the big K-Tech gravel road?
Yes, that, that's what's proposed. And like I said, I mean, you, we can make changes before the, the second reading, but in order to not halt the process, I think, uh, the developers fully understand, but the council is after here, um, so they're gonna take it back and talk about it and hopefully we get a good answer at our next meeting so that we can keep on going. But it would be my suggestion that we go ahead and pass the first reading so that we can at least move forward. Is there any other questions?
I hope you invite the developer next to you.
Say it again.
I hope you would invite the developer to come here or represent it with the company.
Okay.
I see a hand up in the back. You know the drill, Mr. Davis.
Is that all the questions you guys have for me or?
Yeah, but just, just hang tight in case he has a question for you.
Thank you, sir.
Name and address, please.
Arnold Davis, Field fourteen, South Carolina Avenue, Avon Park. I, I, I tell you, first of all, I want the community. And with the gated community, that's what it's gonna be, a gated community, right?
It'll be fenced.
A gated land.
Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis, all comments are directed to this council.
Coming up as a child, okay, every community I know like this that is, that is being, getting ready to be put in now, is gonna be gated. I won't be able to walk over to the lake and fish like I used to do if I wanted to go down to grow with that fur. But what you gonna do, you gonna?
Sir, no, no public access to the lake is being altered in any way.
No way?
No, that land has always been private land, you've never been allowed to go there.
Okay, yeah, we used to walk through there.
I understand that you may have, but you were trespassing.
But then nobody, nobody ever went in there.
I understand, but it's private property.
But the people that owned it was, was, gave us liberty to walk through there and fish and whatnot.
Which is their right to do, yeah.
Well, they likely didn't know it was happening. They not likely didn't know it was happening because it is trespassing.
The, the point is, no, no public access points are being altered in any way. There's no private, there's no public docks, there's no public, uh, rights of way or anything like that that go to the lake that are being changed here.
Okay, okay, but with the, with the ruin and stuff, I hear you saying the kids gonna be riding through there fast and all that. Don't you know kids got sense when they see houses and stuff being built, a nice community, that they're not gonna run through there like hoodling?
My rebuttal to that is that they continually go up and down Main Street, so, obviously not.
But my thing is, okay, if something happened big in their apartment, you got to vacate. Okay, everybody living over in that area gonna have to go all the way to Twenty-Seven when they can get out right there. I remember as a kid going to school, when I went to the junior college to take a, a vocation as a course, I used to go through there. That was the quickest way for me to get to the cottage. But now it's gonna be blocked off. It's gonna be blocked off. Just like, like, I know this ain't got nothing to do with it, but I can't go fishing down to, uh, what's the little lake, uh?
Coca-Cola Lake.
No, not Coca-Cola.
Lake Denton.
Lake Denton. I can't go fishing to Lake Ices, all blocked off. Everybody in their room right, you can't get to the lake, through your, be trespassing. And I thought you should always be able to get to a lake.
That's, we're, we're not altering the access to the lake, huh?
But it, we, eventually, when, when those houses are built over there, you won't be able to fish over there. You won't be able to go through there and, and go to the hospital.
Legally, you can't go there right now. Legally, you can't.
Through the road?
No, I'm saying on private property.
You can't, so can't walk up to the lake through, through, through private property without trespassing.
There, there's public access to the lake.
Okay, but if, after, after I get to the boat round,
Yeah.
I should have liberty to go all around that lake, but after those houses are put in, somebody gonna see me back there and say I'm trespassing when I'm not trespassing.
If you're in the hundred year high water mark, you can do that.
I understand, that's what I'm saying.
But that is right now, without a single house, is private property, Arnold. You've never legally, without explicit permission from the owner, been able to go to that lake through that property, never.
Okay, let me go another way then, okay.
I don't, I don't know what about that.
Okay, you all.
You and I both fish all the time, all right, I got you.
Okay.
And I'm an advocate for public rights to go to the lake. This is not stopping that.
But let me go this way, okay, you guys are public officials. The people put you in.
Correct.
Okay, so you should give the people their wishes. If the people want, don't want this to come in, I mean, ain't nothing wrong with them building the houses there, but why you wanna make it private? Ain't nothing wrong with putting the houses there, put your houses there. But why separate yourself? I mean, I thought this was a loving community. But, but we wanna be separated, that's what I see now. How we gonna ever come together when you got some people wanna be on a little segment over here and don't want nobody to come through their property?
Okay.
Why be separating ourselves like this?
Why don't we?
Why we letting somebody come in that kinda live here? I was born and raised here, a lot of these people was born and raised here, and.
Understood, appreciate it.
I hear you.
So I, I have, I just have, I just wanna talk about this for a minute. Instead of maybe putting up wall of fence, yes, but is there any way that they, they might look into beautifying the area with maybe decorative lights along the edges to make it appealing to people?
I mean, they're, they're gonna have enhanced landscape, that's all around the, the perimeter there. There's a thirty foot setback that's gotta be there, they've got a landscape buffer that's gonna go around it as well. It's gonna enhance that area.
Just for the record, your, your name is again?
Oh, Justin, Justin.
Okay.
So, so they will be enhancing that area, uh, including the homes that are gonna be out there on there as well.
Yeah, I mean, the development enhances the area by millions of dollars.
Yes, it's, it is a multi-million dollar project.
At any point in history, the, the beachfront, the community, uh, any of those places could have been developed at any point. Nothing is stopping them from being developed. Success begets success, so the more development you have in an area, the more development you will see. That is the whole point of where we should be going as a city is to grow. We have a huge housing deficiency in Avon Park, as Councilwoman McGuire said earlier. We have to do something to fill those needs. We have a private group that is coming up wanting to build these homes. Obviously, we, it's our job to see if we can find a way to make that work. So by all means, we appreciate the development and we need to try to find a way forward, so. Ms. Johnson, give your name and address for the record.
Shirley Johnson, two oh two Williamsburg, Avon Park, Florida, and good evening. Now we'll just address you all, 'cause I'm not getting into this argument. I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I've been here all my life as well. And I'm sure that you, I'm not talking nobody to my right. I'm sure that you as a council can sit down and, and look at something and come up with something where the road would still be open for the citizens. I too go on that road. Okay, y'all can go to wherever crap I want to, uh, everybody can. But can't we just sit down together as a community, as a people, and see what we can do? What are the other options to keep that open so that you can have a accessibility? Oh, yeah, I understand what Miss Davis is saying, but we drove back there and went fishing. We used that road. We didn't go through, I didn't go through Lawrence Road. But I'm just saying, can we as a, as a committee, as a council, look at some things? Y'all talk to the developer and see if there's any other options we can have where that road would be available for the people, all the people. I was over there today, and, and I'm not trying to make nothing be black and white, but I didn't see nobody black on that road but me today. But there was some old people riding through. So I'm just saying, can we come together? If we wanna help you and you want a community to come together and grow, we are the city of charm. Talk about it. Talk about it together and see if there's some things we can come up with to make this happen so everyone can win in this thing, everyone. I, I'm, I'm waiting to see this development pop up. But also waiting to see what we're gonna do together to work together on that road. That's all I have. You ain't gotta even hit gather, I tell you to sit down and go through.
Well, I appreciate that, too. Yeah. Oh, yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
And that Jones, three zero six four Kyle Yelphy Drive, here in Avon Park. Um, I have a couple of questions, I'm addressing it to the council and to the developer. The purpose of your doing is to build the homes, make it affordable, but you also wanna cut it off for anybody else to have access to that specific property, except for going around for inconvenience. My question to you are, you are going to have to fix that road that's already there?
No.
Are you gonna, are you gonna fix the road up that's, that's going through there now?
The, the proposal is that the road would be closed, that's the proposal.
Close it off so it's gonna be homes that's gonna go on top of that road now?
They're gonna build a series of, if you look at the plan, uh, yeah, you probably don't have it there, but anyway, if you look at the plan, it looks like a regular subdivision, that's how you have roads every so often, you know, that go through there. It's completely gritted out, in other words.
Okay, is that what they're gonna, they're gonna grit out the road and build houses? So the reason why you wanna get, cut it off is because you're saying that you don't want people have access to it because of the dirt bikes? Is that the only thing you're saying, dirt bikes?
Uh, you'll have to answer this question if, if you choose. Yeah, you, you guys can, can switch back and forth, just whenever you go to answer a question, just say this is so and so from.
Justin Ham.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's a matter of, like I mentioned, and the several items that I said as far as the, the roadway maintenance for the city that they have to do, the track for the future of the station that they're getting, the force manisment that they're getting, the pedestrian safety that's coming through, uh, and then also the cleanup that's out there on that property as well, that the city's encumbering as of the transfer from accounting.
Yeah.
So you were saying that the city will have to take on all that if you all do not close that road? That's the reason why you close, so you all can take, take responsibility of that, am I correct?
Correct.
But you're also closing out because you're gonna make it a private community with their golf carts and dog park, where all the amenities that nobody else can have access to but that community?
Correct.
What's the, if you could give me, what's the going rate for those homes?
Yeah, I mean, so, it's not really working this, this, this back and forth thing, so if you wanna just propose your questions, get them all out there all at once and then.
Yeah, okay, so what's, what's the going rate for those homes that's gonna be developed out there?
Questions to the council.
Correct. So any person that comes to the program is, is talking to the council.
Okay, so what is the going rate for those homes that's gonna be developed out there?
Okay, go on to your next question, none of us can answer that.
You can't answer that?
No, ma'am, just understand what I'm saying. Spin out all your questions at once, and then he can come up and try and answer.
That's my, that's my question.
Right, we don't have an answer for you.
You don't have an answer?
The developer's not there.
The developer's not, what does the?
He probably does, but if you just understand what I'm saying, if you go ahead and ask the rest of your questions, then hopefully they'll be addressed once you sit down and he is allowed to come back and put it.
Is there any other questions, Jim?
That, that's my last question.
Okay.
Justin Ham again. It's, uh, it's market driven, so it's market dependent, so I'm not real sure exactly what the, the going rate currently is based on the market.
Okay.
I have one question for you, I'd like to make something clear, maybe I didn't quite catch this. Are you planning on doing something with that road for the private community to use? Or you just gonna put grass over it and have no road there at all?
If you look at the map.
Yeah, there's a map there in the back that I handed you.
The map isn't all that clear.
Yeah, so you see, there's, there's no longer a road there, there's just gonna be an easement to allow access, uh, to the, to the force maintenance there. And then we've got the, uh, homes around that and the, the roads that go through there as well.
I mean, they're just gonna cover that road with sod and just have a public area and that'll be beautiful.
In certain areas, it'll just be sod.
Where's the going?
Look on page four, Jim.
Right.
Look on page four.
The yellow line on page four.
The yellow line and road?
That's the current road, yeah.
That's gonna be removed.
So that yellow line will remain, that's the force main that we have. And so if you see those bars everywhere, those are the homes. And you can notice how there's not a single bar on that, it's because they're not gonna build a home above that force main.
Then there's a road to the left of that.
To the left, that's the easement for the power company. The, the large one with the little dog light there.
So there's, there's no roads for the developer to use other than the one that's supposed to fit. You mean anything?
Correct, there's just the, the main entrance that comes in this way.
Right.
I mean, you're not gonna have a road in certain lines around the road for the community.
No.
None on the outside, mister.
All right. I, I'll, I'll say the same thing with the mayor, I, I agree with a hundred percent. I think that, uh, uh, I think for the sake of the community, I definitely hope that you take us back to the developer. I talked to somebody that, uh, was working with them and I asked him to invite the developer or representative tonight. Uh, and glad as you came as, as an engineering company, but I wish somebody from there would've come. So some of these questions could be answered more directly, but I, since you're the only one here we can ask, do what the mayor says, please go back to the developer and see if they can come up with a solution, you know, make this, uh, community friendly and make everybody happy, and I'll be off for that night. And I really hope that they do because we do need this community developed, we do need housing, and I think it's gonna be a beautiful place, so I'm off for it. But let's see if we can come to a solution that'll make everybody happy, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I know, we, we've taken a look at it, like I said, and, and, but we'll take another dive at it and another stab at it and try and see if we can come up with a solution.
That's all I can ask, thank you so much.
All right, so again, this is a two reading process.
Can I, uh, say something?
You can, yes. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Eric Wilson, fourteen forty-five South Carolina Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, 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 I understand what you're saying and I, I appreciate it, and I know, and I just wanna throw, um, a proposal out there for him, when you, when you go back to the developer and look at it, your road runs one way, and then it, the dirt road turns around. That power line
Right.
goes straight to that road that goes to the station.
It's a much more direct route, yeah.
Yeah, it goes straight, straight to, if they were to put like a road that goes straight through there and then he can fence off both sides of that road,
Right.
that would give access to Twenty-Seven South, Twenty-Seven North, the gas station, you know, car dealership.
Win all around.
Yeah, and so that would be a, a good proposal for them if they look at something to try to help. Eric, say it again.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, so again, it's a two step process, so we can approve this, we still have another reading to go to. We can, um, deny it the next one if the outcome is not what the council wants. So there's no reason why we can't move forward at this point to not hinder it anymore. Having said that, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-two. You're looking for a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second, any last questions?
I'm sorry, mayor, we're approving to have them go back to the table or to pay?
So we've instructed them to go back to the developer. So it would be two readings, so we can change it in between the two readings is what I was getting at. So if we wanna keep the process moving forward, we can do that.
This is the approval of the first meeting.
Correct. So the idea is that at the next meeting, if they come up with an answer that's satisfactory to the majority of the council, then we can approve that. Or not. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any last questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure? Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes or no?
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Hope we can beat you up your bad.
All right, item number sixteen, we have a business truck lease for Ranger, Mr. Schrader.
Yeah, back when Pam went out to the airport, we had no vehicle out there for them to use, so we were having to run out there with our pickup trucks and help them. When we got new vehicles, um, I had Rick take one of the old meter reader's truck out there for them to use. Um, our insurance company when we got with them said it'd be best if they insured it also, but their insurance company will not insure it unless we lease it to them, so I got with Jerry and Jerry's prepared the lease agreement.
Okay. Obviously the lease agreement satisfactory to Jerry and staff, right? Any questions on this truck, please?
I did.
Go ahead.
Why do we have to use this? Why do they?
You don't have to.
So why do?
Can I answer?
Yes.
Because they're only out there on agreement, they're not out there on a fifty-year lease at this point, and they, they're working on a shoestring budget right now, and so we gave it to them so they could get the work done. And it is a great help for us not to have somebody sitting out there, and right now they're doing a good job in what they're doing, but they needed a vehicle to be able to throw stuff in the bag.
And I understand this is not, not that expensive a vehicle.
It's a, it's a twenty-ten vehicle that was, we replaced it, so no, it's not.
Okay. Any other questions?
What is the requirement on the insurance of this vehicle? Oh, I saw something about six million dollars.
Yeah, that's still in there, I think we need to, we didn't get that out of there, Jerry, because you have Jerry and I and it was too, we, we, Pam talked about that.
Yeah, we agreed, they, they have two million policy.
Right, yeah, correct.
So just consider that two million. I, I thought we got.
Yeah, I thought we did too. Too many agreements.
I just thought six million was on my.
Yeah. So did we? Actually, that wa, actually that was our new attorney outside on insurance recommended.
And there's really more for big, big, big projects as opposed to this.
Yeah, I don't think that there's any more than that.
So if you run, if you run the truck into a private jet, it could be.
I understand that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we're looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve D sixteen, business truck lease to Pam.
Do we have a second?
I have a second, I have another question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is this for like a thirty-day lease occurring, or is this for a yearly lease? I thought it's thirty days.
It's open, and then basically it's called a, you know, a, yeah, yeah, ever, ever reclause, basically. So it keeps going until somebody gets thirty days' notice.
Okay, that's all I, that's, I'm very proud, okay, thank you. I do second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. There's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seventeen, we have the sound of veterinary services redevelopment.
So they've asked us to, um, expand a, um, easement that they have over there at the veterinary services that we split, um, entryway with them, uh, slightly, as you can see from the plan there. Um, talked to everyone with the city manager, and it felt like there wasn't a huge, um, impact on the city to do that. They agreed to, to, um, that what they had expanded there, where they would have to maintain themselves, whereas the rest of it is maintained jointly, so, um, recommend they go ahead and approve.
Okay.
Subject here.
Any questions on this? Seeing none, we're looking for a motion?
Make a motion to include item number D seventeen for the develop, redevelopment sound of veterinary service.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eighteen, we have the approval of purchase of bedroom meters. These are the same meters that we buy on a regular basis, this is another batch of them, there's nothing that's particularly unique about this batch. Do we have a motion?
I made a motion to approve item number D eighteen for the purchase of, uh, two hundred and fifty bedroom, model point five, and about a fifty-sixth of two hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, any questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number nineteen, we have the approval of purchase of two runway closure markers. If you remember, these are the markers we discussed at the last meeting. We got a grant for these markers, it was not cost the city a dime, and in fact, they came in under the grant amount. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve D nineteen for runway closure markers.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second, do we have any questions?
That includes sugar charge, correct?
Yep. Seeing no questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number twenty, we have the approval of purchase of trailer-mounted brush chipper. It's a brush chipper that was, uh, budgeted last fiscal time. Any questions on it? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number D twenty for the purchase of a brush chipper.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? Now, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Have the approval of the purchase of a Toro Sampro. Again, this is a budgeted item. Everything seems to be as budgeted. Entertaining a motion?
Make a motion to approve item number D twenty-three for the twenty-twenty-three F three fifty.
No, D twenty-one for the Toro Sampro.
Oh, well, I'm well, alright, okay.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion, that's, I just said.
All right. We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. There's no questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number twenty-two, this would be the purchase of the twenty-twenty-three F three fifty pickup truck, the water wastewater. Again, this was a budgeted item. Everything seems to be in order, anything to add from staff?
No.
I just had one question. I know if I'm, if I'm reading it correctly, that it comes with a five-year, hundred thousand dollar, or a hundred thousand mile warranty. Would we ever consider extending that, getting an extended warranty? Have we been keeping them for like ten years? Or is it not worth it financially?
I don't know, something we can look at, see if it is.
We're just keeping all of these vehicles for like ten years, I didn't know if it would be worth it.
Yeah, I mean, the only vehicles that I know of that we're actually getting rid of is more or less the garbage trucks, right? Those are pretty much done after five years.
Correct.
But all these personal vehicles, they're keeping long.
They run a lot, well, we got one going twenty-two years right now, so that's gonna be replaced. But I mean, we can look at, see what it costs for. We actually, the purchasing, I didn't say, actually met with some people about leasing vehicles, see if that was even cheaper, didn't seem it, but we can look at that.
Sure.
Though we did just bring out another mechanic, so we want to keep them busy.
All right, any other questions on this? No, that'll entertain a motion.
We hear this one, Ron.
Twenty-two.
All right, I can motion to approve D twenty-two for the F three fifty pickup truck.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number twenty-three, this would be the approval of the twenty-twenty-three F three fifty diesel pickup truck for streets. Again, it's a budgeted item.
Make a motion to approve item D twenty-three for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-three F three fifty diesel pickup truck.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We're noting that this vehicle came in one dollar, under the budgeted amount.
Hey, we don't mess around.
You're good.
So I know we're gonna call roll and everything, but I just have a question on these. How does the process work for the quotes that come in for the vehicles? There are, do we, do we get quotes from other people other than in the county?
No, we piggyback off ones that have already gone out and put bids out, like this one, I don't know, this was probably Sourcewell, Sourcewell, but one of them was on the floor, Sheriff's Association, those are the two. That way you don't have to go out, and they're usually the lowest. Actually, the, the, the one for the markers, we could go through GSA, Government Services Administration, but we looked at two other places, and one was even cheaper than that, so one of them is gonna be sent here from Hawaii, so they're a little higher, so. But no, we, we usually piggyback back off someone's already done.
Yeah, so in the current situation of the vehicles being really hard to get, I do know that they allocate a certain amount of vehicles for these contracts, and so that was one major factor, is that if you just ordered them through the regular process, you would never get them.
Yeah, the economies of scale are far better.
Right, and the local ones almost could never match it unless they, we went through this as Sheriff's Office, once in a great moon, we would look past floor Sheriff's Association. If they had some on the list, they just couldn't get rid of, they might give it to you, but then they can't come close to matching it. We, we all wish we could buy these vehicles for what the city gets them for.
Yeah, the, uh, just on a side, the, the last vehicle that I purchased, uh, the city actually was buying a vehicle that was almost identical to it. And at the time, I think I paid, uh, an additional seven thousand dollars more than what the city was paying.
Yeah, not surprising.
Which is still less than you buy it today.
And that was after weeks of haggling and written rolls. Anyway, all right, we have a motion in a second. If there's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The attorney updates.
Yeah, I just wanted to combine, um, so I've been working with, um, the council to Sax and Gilmore, one firm, that, there's a lot of stuff, I don't do the litigation, I don't do that anymore, and, um, some specialty areas like constru, um, land, uh, the property law and, um, uh, construction law. And since, since I've been working with them for over twelve years, um, I, I, from city work, I don't take anything from what they get. They, they bill you and they owe my city bill, and it's all a hundred percent goes to them, a hundred percent what I bill goes to them. Um, but, uh, we are changing that relationship, and, um, I won't be getting a, a small percentage of their, what they make on the time that I bill for all my cities. And, um, I just wanted to, um, make sure that was okay with you. It won't change your, your value, your price, your, um, hourly rate or anything like that, and won't be more time billed or anything like that, just everything stays the same, except I'm, I'm gonna get, um, a percentage from that. Which is actually typical.
I have, I have no problem with it, so I'm like, Jerry's gonna be going on more vacations.
Eventually. I look forward to retirement, but no time soon.
All right. I don't have any problem with it. Do you need a motion to that effect?
Would you please?
Do we have a motion?
I'm moving.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for your participation.
All right, city manager updates.
Hurricane debris pickup, they're still working seven days a week, sun up, the sun down. I did talk to, uh, Gator, the county engineer on something else, I brought up to him, because I see every day where they're picking up, in the past about three or four days, they haven't picked anything up in the city, I just asked him why. They, they had a bunch of piles in Sebring and, um, he thinks they move people from here down, but he did look down on the active map, they can watch them where they are any second, and they were back here working. I know they hit Avon Park Lakes this weekend, it's permanent there, so they're still hard at it.
Has the city stopped picking up any debris?
Yeah, we haven't picked up any debris.
We're just waiting for them to pick up everything?
Correct. That's, that's in the agreement.
Well, they're still on, uh, route number one, because they still haven't picked up all the yard.
First time going around, yes.
So they're gonna do three times on the yard waste and then do the household items?
No, af- After all the yard waste, then they're moving on to the, the, the construction debris. But they haven't hit every street yet.
Yeah, because there's still a bunch out there, and they get caught every day that people.
I get some here and there, but not that bad. County gets, engineer gets beat up worse, so, but they got, they, they have, I think as of yesterday, it was forty or forty-five trucks working. And again, they're, they've been fighting against getting crews here because they're all down south, and down south, Panama, so that's where they're going, so. It's nobody's, you know. Again, I guess I, I heard a county commissioner, when somebody got a complaint, it was watching one of the meetings for a reason last week, and, um, it was about the, the stormwater, Navon Park, but in that county, and about, you know, the, the lakes are high, you need to do something, and he probably heard enough, and he said they were talking about a five-hundred-year flood here, folks, I mean, that's.
So those in the back, please, please keep your talk, ma'am.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Mark, do they say, do they deal with the tenants who they do, and they, they get to be picked up? Is it gonna be picked up before Thanksgiving?
I don't know whether it is or not, except they have been hit every street.
And we can't get any subcontractors in here to submit their, pay, um, submit their contract to FEMA to be paid?
No, once we entered into an agreement with the county, and very thankfully we did, because dealing with FEMA, S, S, we're dealing with FEMA just for our people out working and using chainsaws and that, how much work is that creating for you?
Probably right now, up to probably eight to ten hours, just gathering the information and getting it into the format.
So we don't, we don't want to get into that, but they're, they're doing the best they can, we all just need to give them time, and if they miss one here or there, then we'll call in and have them get it, but I had noticed more, especially out in the lakes, they picked up more over the weekend, and they were in the city working today, so.
Yeah, I mean, by all means, I mean, you, you know, you don't have to be ugly when you call them, but, uh, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so the more people in a particular area that call in and say, hey, you haven't picked up in this area, they're gonna get better service, so call in, encourage everyone else.
Well, I'm sure we'll probably have more trucks up here today, because I talked to Gator, or tomorrow, because I talked to Gator today, so.
I guess I'm probably, I'm having this, it's no particular area, it's all over the city. So ain't no particular area to call in. I was talking to, um, one of the guys out there on the road, and they said, oh, how beautiful it was. I rode, I got, some mornings I don't sleep, and I got up three o'clock in the morning, it was beautiful. It was beautiful, I had never seen the city like that in two years. It was beautiful, and then the storm came, and it's like, we're like, we're back at it again. And it's like, it's just, I don't know, my biggest thing was, like I said last year, you have people coming home for the holidays. Nobody wanna see the city with trash sitting on the side of the road for the holidays.
Well, it's better than the relatives going to Fort Myers for the holiday, so in that case, we're blessed, but. With, um, Nazgrass, next one I got on here, we just got our first quote today. It's a little over thirty-one thousand dollars, go out and do with that. We're waiting on two others, the, obviously we'd have to go out to bed if we go that way, but.
Are these test wells they're doing, or?
No, this is, this, it, we told them what we need, actually, this is the, the, um, engineering environmental firm we've used out there at the airport before, they're the ones who gave us this quote. And they would go out and they, first they have to find, check, see where there's metal out there laying around and, and other things, and flag it off, and then they, they take their sam, samples from the area that they know there's metal underneath and that. It's kind of a whole big process, so. But right now, it's, it just came in this afternoon, because I had, um, Nazgrass people get ahold of me earlier.
Waiting on two of the quotes, you said?
Yeah, and if, but if it's over twenty-five, we're gonna have to go out to bed on it, because that's our procurement policy, but.
That, that was hers. And the concern is gas, right?
Correct.
But they're not necessarily checking for gas?
No, I, actually, what I was able to read for a couple minutes, um, when Andy gave it to me, uh, showed it to me earlier, was that's what they are looking for, is the gas, but it's it's, because he said, you know, I can't give this in a Reader's Digest, or, and they do so much, I said, well, that's why the pros at it. I said, well, that's why the pros at it and we're not. We just can't go out there and, you know, stick a rod down and pull up sand and soil, so. That's, we'll see what the other ones send in.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, fam, FAA has approved our individual fee estimates, all of them that we sent them. So Mel, you want to add to that? What, what's the next phase?
So we have a meeting with, um, outside council to, I think it's next, is it Thursday?
No, it's Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday, um, to, for further discussion, um, once we get the actual contract signed, um, want to put, not signed, but the contracts then for outside council, have TFA approve those and then bring them back to you guys for approval and, and forward.
So it's good news that they approved them. Um, last one I got, your November twenty-eighth meeting, that's, um, that'd be your next meeting. That's the night of the parade. And it's the Monday after Thanksgiving, so if you want to postpone it, we don't really have anything at this point pressing to get in front of you. And it might be good to probably, unless we gotta have to have a special meeting for something, just to go to the November twelfth, especially with this road thing. Because we have to post the road and get it in paper and.
You meant December twelfth.
What's that?
You meant December twelfth, right?
Yeah, what that is, uh?
November.
November.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. Uh, obviously you need a motion for that, right?
Yes, yeah.
Do we have a motion to po, to cancel the next meeting? The November twenty-eighth meeting?
Twenty-eighth motion to postpone the November twenty eighth meeting?
To cancel.
Oh, to cancel it and to move it to December what twelfth?
That's our next meeting. That's the next meeting.
That would be the next.
Yeah, we're moving it and just cancel it.
Understood.
Second.
Sorry.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any questions on it? Seeing none, call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Obviously, if anything emergent pops up, then we'll have to call a meeting.
Do you know when the next CRA meeting is due?
That's going to be, whoop.
Should be then, right?
Uh, the CRA board meeting or advisory, that would be that meeting.
December twelfth.
Well, no, it would have to be the last meeting in December. Yeah, so that is. I don't know, I can't remember.
Twenty-sixth, which is a holiday.
December twenty-sixth.
Yes, which obviously we're, we're not going to have that meeting either, so it'd probably be a good idea to go ahead if we have items to have that meeting on our December twelfth, which I'm sure.
You know, it's really crazy about the American holidays and.
Do we need a motion to that? Because we're going, you're going to let us know if you have items on it, right?
Right.
Very good. Anything else?
I have one more thing. Um, we have the vote on it. Oh, twelfth.
I didn't hear a motion.
I messed it up, but I made it.
She made, she made a motion, go ahead, cancel the meeting.
Oh, for November twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
I apologize. I thought you were talking December.
Councilmember Bernard, second.
No, I, I got that.
We didn't vote, right?
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did.
Yeah, we did. We did.
I think everyone's tired.
Shelley, you had one, one more thing?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the big stump that's on Main Street, right across the street from ARC, in front of the bank. Do you know anything about when they'll pull it up, grind it down, pull it up?
We're hoping it's going to grow back.
What's that?
Hoping it's grow, going to grow back.
Oh, I don't think it's going to. Or because I won't be, be here to see it.
Actually, this is what I know from talking to Rick and David one day. David Roberts wanted to leave it there because he didn't want to get, grind it out because it's got a bunch of water lines in there. And Rick says, hey, we need to cut it down and get it out of there, so.
Well, if he doesn't want to grind it, I mean, get it out of there, could they at least cut it to the surface? Is that not a thing?
Yeah, it is.
What if a local artist came and carved something cool?
That'd be nice, too. A red double.
Um, and also too, I, I asked you the other day about the disequipped going to be done. You're sure it's going to be done so it can be decorated, right?
I guarantee you.
I bother every day. It's making me feel nervous.
I don't know. I have to pull a mare back out there, but it'll be done.
And I do give praises to the city staff and the workers out there. I've seen them out there last couple of weeks. And, uh, since the last meeting, they really got on top of it, even though we had the storm in between them. So I know that they're repairing that material and I think they're doing a great job as well as the decoration. So kudos to the city workers out there as well. I think that's why you're out there one day, so thank you.
I'll get out there once in a while.
Yeah.
All right.
Mark, is the, um, council going to be required to be in the light of the glass here?
It'd be at the council.
Yeah, nothing's required.
I'm going to be here. So at what time did you know?
It was.
The lighting's at six.
Six, right.
Six?